Good afternoon everyone and welcome to this additional council meeting. I would now like to invite councillor James to do a welcome to country.
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe and my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge our elders, both past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yorta Yorta nations and all its people, whose land we meet on today. So on behalf of the elders council, the 16 family groups and the eight respected tribes who proudly share in the status of traditional owners of this land, I say a very warm welcome to this wonderful land, country and waterways. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you very much. We Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yorta Yorta peoples of the land, which now comprise as Greater Shepparton. With our respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live by our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. Government's principles. Council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to overarching government's principles stated in section 9/2 of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are listed from 1 to 9 as printed in the agenda. Item five, apologies, do we have any apologies today?
Yes, Mayor O'Keeffe, I'd like to acknowledge the apology of councillor Shane Saly today.
Very much. Item six, do we have any declarations of conflict of interest that need to be declared today at this meeting?
Yes, Mayor O'Keeffe, I do. In accordance with section 98 of the governance rules, I declare an interest in report 7.2. In relation to the detail, it's fairly obvious, I'm the CEO and this report is in relation to the CEO's Employment and Remuneration Committee and approval of committee members and external independent member. Therefore, it's appropriate that I'm not involved in that discussion and I'll exit the building.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillors, we go to page seven, item 7.1, 2020/22 council meeting dates. There's a recommendation also on page seven, would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, I would like to move the recommendation on page seven, that says that the council, as a motion, that the council resolves that number one, scheduled council meetings for 2020 continue to be held at 3pm on the third Tuesday of each month at 79 to 90 Wellsford Street, Shepparton. Number two, no scheduled council meeting be held in January 2022. And number three, the scheduled council meeting cycle be resumed on 15th February 2022.
Very much, do I have a second, councillor Dobson?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, this is a very simple motion. Basically, it's setting the cycle for the next year for council meetings and scheduled council meetings are to be held every Tuesday, every third Tuesday of each month at 3pm. And so this is about the monthly council meeting and also it's about making sure that the scheduled council meeting will resume in January, in February 2022. And there will be no meeting in January 2022. And this is something which council has been following for the past many years, it's a tradition, it's a practice. And basically, in January, when we don't have any council meeting, any ordinary council meeting, or sorry, scheduled council meeting, what it means is that, of course, after this New Year break and Christmas time and all the New Year break, you know, council staff really want to make sure, to take that, the time off to relax and unwind. And then when they come back in January, the meetings can only start in February because and information that is provided for the, for the ordinary council meeting. So yeah, so basically, I'm happy to support this motion that the, that there's no scheduled council meeting in January 2022 and the scheduled council meetings for the next year resume in February, on the, to be specific, on February will be the first meeting in 2022. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, just in support of that motion, I note that we're back at briefings on the 25th of January and the council officers will be back quite before that, but it's a good chance for the council officers to have a decent break over the Christmas New Year period, it's been a heavy, it's been a heavy year in many aspects, as with the councillors, so we, we're back to work on the 25th of January with a first scheduled meeting in February.
Thank you very much, would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Just prior going to the vote, there will be a lot of activity actually happening in January, so don't relax too much councillors, we've actually got some really great sporting events coming to our community and really great to see those events coming back. So yes, we'll definitely have a break, but I'm really looking forward to also having a very busy month. We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Ask Mr Harriet Delap, thank you very much. Councillors, we now go to page 10, item 7.2, the Chief Executive Employment and Remuneration Committee, approval of committee members. There is also a recommendation on page 10, would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, I would like to move the recommendation on page 10. Recommendation reads that the council, one, approve David Priest to be the external independent member of the CEO Employment and Remuneration Committee and two, to appoint councillor Shane Saly and councillor Sam Spinks to the committee alongside the mayor and deputy mayor.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, councillor Dobson?
Yes, I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, yes, the committee will consist, if approved here, will be, consist of the mayor, the deputy mayor, two councillors and an independent panel member. To make a committee work, it needs to be a reasonable sized committee, instead of having all nine councillors there and available to make the decision. It's a workable committee, it's a manageable committee, but the decision making at the end of the day, and it's really important to emphasise this, is made by all councillors. And it'll come back to all councillors, to-ing and fro-ing as we work through that particular committee. And it's certainly not about the current custodian of the CEO hot seat, if you like, in Peter Harriet, but it's more rather about the process. And just speaking on the process, it's about overseeing the recruitment of a CEO, about making recommendations in relation to remuneration and conditions of the initial employment and regularly assessing the CEO's performance against, you know, key performance indicators and achievable strategic objectives, etc. So there's a whole range of things that we'll be working through there. I'm very much of the opinion of trying to amalgamate some of what seems to be a little bit disjointed. You've got an appraisal, you've got KPIs, you've got remuneration, trying to bring all that together to make it a little bit more workable. I think with a small working committee, but overseeing all of that and bringing it back to council, I think that may work very, very well.
Thank you very much, councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, the important issue here is that the committee will ensure that all councillors will have the opportunity to provide feedback and input on the matters detailed above. And the committee will provide to all councillors a record of outcomes and recommendations of each meeting they hold. So to my mind, this, this motion is all about the efficiency of determining the subject matter that's there with the, with the ability of all councillors to have an input, once the information comes back to councillors as a whole. I think it's a great way of doing it, it's modern practice in, in public life, in public corporations and I certainly endorse it.
Thank you very much, would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
I'd like to move an amendment please. That point one, approve David Priest to be the external independent member of the CEO Employment and Remuneration Committee and be removed.
Be removed?
Removed from the motion, as an amendment.
Do we have a second, um? That's lost.
In that case, I'll speak against, thank you. Yeah, I can't, I can't support appointing someone I've never met, who could potentially influence this crucial process. It's quite a high level position there, in a room discussing how we'd like to be seen by the public. The CEO review is an opportunity to ensure that the person leading our council represents our values and expectations. The CEO is charged with making many decisions on our behalf and these decisions all impact our community in some way or another and often those decisions come back to bite us. The person recommended to be the external independent member is highly experienced in local government and I'm sure he's a lovely person, but potentially this person will represent the interests of local government itself and not necessarily our community. So we are voted in by the community, that is who we represent. I don't want someone in there who potentially could be adept at explaining away issues that may impact our community, especially when they do not live here. Our CEO is the face of our organisation and that makes this one of the most important decisions we can make. It's an opportunity to show where he's doing well, it's an opportunity to show where we'd like it to be tightened up, it's an opportunity to have a broad conversation about outcomes that we expect from somebody who we employ and we only employ one person. So personally, I'm not in favour of the new panel process at all, I think we should go back to the drawing board on that. But I do wholeheartedly endorse councillor Spinks and councillor Saly as council representatives, but I just don't think we should be streamlining this, it is, it needs all our equal and full attention and input. So I can't support the motion as it is and hopefully we can come back with other options at the December meeting, but it looks like this is going ahead, which is astounding to me, but it is a democracy, so thank you.
Thank you very much, would any councillor wish to speak for the motion?
Mayor O'Keeffe, I'd like to move an amendment please.
So what's that amendment?
I'd like to add an additional point that three, we review the committee in 12 months' time. I'm not sure if that's enough to be clear, but I'd like to...
So you're saying, no, it's probably not enough, because you're saying review the committee. Where it's changed the actual recommendation, we are actually voting on the committee and we're actually voting on actually appointing someone to that committee. So to review that in 12 months' time doesn't align with what the recommendation is, so sorry, councillor Spinks, I have to deny that amendment. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Spinks?
I will speak for it, I do support, it's fine. And I suppose just mentioning in it that I think it is important that we review the, the process of this. This is new to all councillors and to our council. It is essential that this particular process and responsibility of councillors is ensured that all nine of us are along for the ride, that it is something we are all comfortable with, that we create a process and an environment where we all have fair input and at the end of the day, all nine councillors are decision makers, this committee is simply administrative in the attempt to streamline processes. I very much look forward to the opportunity to sit on this committee, to both learn and contribute to this process. And I feel very strongly that the role is purely for the committee to sort out the details and then to, you know, bring it back to the, to the nine councillors, I don't think that can be stressed enough how important that is. But I do support the approving David Priest to the committee, I'm very excited to meet and work with him. And I think this is a great opportunity to look at the way that we do this and to keep it fair and efficient, but it is important that we, if not in the motion, that we do review and that we do just stay on top of, if this is working for us. You know, this is something new that we're introducing, but that doesn't mean that it's, you know, there'll be things to work out along the way. So I look forward to that journey.
Thank you very much, would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Brophy, would you like your right of reply?
No, thank you.
We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Against?
Division please, Mayor O'Keeffe.
So we've got councillor, those in favour, we have councillor Spinks, councillor James, councillor Brophy, councillor O'Keeffe, councillor Abdullah and councillor Dobson. And those against, we have councillor Summer and councillor Priestley. And the motion is carried, thank you very much. We'll now ask Peter to come back in. Someone please. Councillors, we now go to page 13, item 8.1, Domestic Animal, 1994, section 26, Dogs on Leash. There's also a recommendation on page 13, would a council like to move a motion please? Councillor Summer?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, I'll move that the council, one, revoke the order as attached to the report made under section 26 of the Domestic Animals Act 1994 on the 16th of October 2018. Two, resolve to adopt the 2021 Order of Greater Shepparton City Council, made on the 23rd of November 2021, under 26.2 Domestic Animals Act 1994 as attached. And three, publish the 2021 order in the Government Gazette and in our newspaper circulating in the municipal districts of the council making the order.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, councillor Brophy?
I second the motion.
Much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I might just, just quickly mention, yeah, because we have to do this by law, because we've recently completed a dog park at Princess Park. There is an off-leash dog park there, but we need to amend the order to allow dogs to be off-leash within the designated area at Princess Park. So I'm, I'm aware that it's open and that there's probably dogs there without a leash already and we are seeking to rectify this situation as quickly as possible, to make it safe and legal for everyone to enjoy.
Thank you very much, councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you Mayor O'Keeffe and well summed up councillor Summer. It's known as the Domestic Animal Dog Act of 1994, but it could well be known as the Who Let the Dogs Out? And hopefully we will, very soon, and off the leash. I've been down there myself and had a look at it, it's very well patronised, it's very well supported, there's tails wagging galore, so obviously everyone's very happy with it. To put this forward this evening is really some technical legalities in allowing the dogs off the leash and as councillor Summer pointed out, we just needed to make sure we did that and ticked a few boxes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? The councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you Mayor O'Keeffe, I suppose this is just a good opportunity to congratulate everybody on a job well done, you know, it's so exciting to have a new dog park opening and I've been down there to check it out, as many of us have and it's really impressive and I think that all the dogs are going to have a wonderful time, as well as the owners. And so I hope that it is well utilised, I'm sure it will be, it's such a beautiful location and I think it shows that these off-leash dog parks and dog areas are important for our municipality. Potentially there are more spaces where they would be appreciated and well utilised. But it's also important to note that, I suppose just to put a gentle request out to community to say, please make sure that, that we are doing the right thing, good dog ownership is important, good pet ownership is important. So please make sure we're using it in a respectful manner for all those people who are going down there so that our dogs and humans can be safe and be enjoying that space for hopefully many years to come.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, that's everything on our agenda today. Just prior to closing, I'd like to wish councillor Dobson a very happy birthday. I'd also like to acknowledge how great it is to be back, which I'm sure many organisations are, back being face to face in our, in our meetings and looking forward to a really positive year ahead post-Christmas and let's hope for a better 2022. We still have another meeting to go prior to that. Okay, I declare the meeting closed, thank you. Thank you.